Six P M. I'll open the study session for board of directors. Public hearing. First thing I want to do is open the public hearing for the S R F drinking water project. D W R F project one six one two six zero D dash Q.
We have Nate Jacobs from local engineering here. He's been in the patient area. He'll cover it for you. Yes, this is Chris.
All right. You hear me okay?
Yeah.
Um, yes, as Jim said, I'm Nate with local engineering. Um, and yeah, I'd like to talk about the S R F project. This is for the drinking water project, which will be the D A F pre-construction or pre-treatment facility. Uh, and the construction of that. This is for the S R F loan, which is a state revolving fund loan. Um, we are also applying for USDA federal loan um to cover the cost of this project. The reason for this project is multiple compliance violations and enforcement orders from the state um in regards to D V Ps, which are disinfection byproducts, a result of T O Cs and other organic matter in the water, in the raw water supply. Um, the trigger for this was elevated D V Ps through water quality sampling above M C Ls. Um, triggered the enforcement order to look for alternative treatment options. Um, as the current treatment process really just isn't working. Um, the current design is ineffective. Um, there's eighteen seconds of contact time between raw water, coagulants, and the membrane filters. That short contact time does not allow for blockulation to occur where the coagulants that are added to the water bind to particulate matter in the water, whether T O C, dissolved solids, floating matter. Blockulation is needed to bind to that matter in the water in order to remove it. Without blockulation, that matter is too small to be removed. Um, so you need to blockulate to get that matter big enough to remove it. However, that eighteen seconds does not allow for coagulation to occur prior to the membranes. And what we're finding is that that blockulation is occurring within the membrane cells themselves, not before. So that is leading to fouling and binding up of the membrane modules with C C M D staff having to manually remove and wash the modules every thirty minutes to an hour. Uh, a normal, well-functioning plant will get fifty to sixty hours of runtime between having to wash either filters or modules. So that's causing a lot of issues for the operators, uh, time and energy to wash those membranes every day. Um, not to mention the D V Ps in the system, leading to water quality violations. So that's kind of the background and the reason for this project. Uh, the scope of the project is for a new pre-treatment facility upstream of the current membrane facility. Uh, the configuration of the pre-treatment facility is a D A F system, which stands for dissolved air flotation. This system also uses coagulants, but provides fifteen minutes to twenty minutes of contact where those coagulants mix in two stages. Uh, manual mixers to mix that coagulation media with the water to allow for blockulation. After the flock forms, the coagulants bind to particles. The dissolved air flotation assembly uses microscopic air bubbles to lift that floating flock to the surface where it is skimmed off and removed and treated as waste. And clean water falls to the bottom, goes then through sand and anthracite filters, then to the existing plant. So this is a pre-treatment upstream of the existing membrane treatment plant. Um, again, with the goal to remove those D V Ps by giving it enough time to form flock and then remove the flock. So that'll lead to lower uh T O Cs. Um, yeah, lower everything in your finished water upstream of the membranes. This will then allow the membrane plant to function for a day or more at a time without operators having to clean it. Uh, the D A F assembly is also self-cleaning in that all the waste matter that floats to the top is automatically skimmed off and sent to a trough that collects the waste. Um, so overall, this pre-treatment will help the operators um make their life easier and in increase treatment effectiveness. Um, again, high turbidity, D V Ps, T O C, that's going to be removed. Um, how also helps uh oxidize iron and manganese, again, of all leading to water quality. Um, reduces your backwash, increases runtime, so your staff can be more productive. Um, yeah, and just revamps the whole process and makes it a lot more effective. So those are sort of the goals. Um, and again, I mentioned a D A F system. We also looked at other alternatives such as plate settlers or tube settlers. They work similarly in that the flock has time to coagulate and then is removed. Um, however, plates and tube settlers were not selected as the footprint needed to install this would be forty to fifty percent higher. So larger building, more equipment, bigger pumps, um, just all elevated costs. We saw about twenty to thirty percent higher cost with that system as opposed to a D A F system. Um, so that was one of the reasons we selected the D A F, not to mention we did a pilot study here about a year ago. Um, got pretty good results through a D A F pilot study, which is a a small-scale version of the D A F system. Um, treated water, remove water, all that we wanted to see in that. Lower turbidity, lower D V Ps, everything. Um, so those were sort of the the way we got to a D A F system and how we came across this model. Um, and so that's why it is the preferred alternative. Um, construction of the D A F building and the D A F equipment inside, our footprint is about a hundred feet by sixty feet. That's the size of the building we're going to need. Um, we're proposing to construct this um pretty much in between the existing pond and Cuerno Verde Boulevard. There's an open lot there that we um determined there's a good location for this hydrologically with getting water from the lake to this building and then transferring this water down to the existing building and out to the distribution system. Um, so that is kind of the construction. We went through an environmental impacts assessment, um, which is needed for federal funds like the USDA. We did not find any negative environmental impacts to this project. Again, relatively small footprint, uh, district-owned lands, um, not infecting any wetlands. So there was minimal environmental impact to this construction, um, which is again needed for federal funds. So um, yeah, once again, we're applying for a state revolving fund as well as federal funds to split the cost of this project for the pre-treatment facility. Um, and again, it's needed because of the enforcement orders. Um, so we're just only addressing D V P issues with this building. Um, we are going to leave space to address P F O S treatment. Um, this enforcement order and working with the state revolving fund, they only wanted to focus on D V P issues, which is the T O Cs in the water removing that. They did not want to focus on P F O S treatment and wanted that to be a separate project. We complied. Um, we will most likely be pursuing a B I L funding, bipartisan infrastructure law funding for emerging contaminants, which P F O S is considered an emerging contaminant. So we are going to leave space and plan for P F O S treatment, however, that is not included in this project. Um, let's see what else. Um, yeah, again, one other issue or one other topic I want like to discuss about this project in that we are applying for federal funds. We need to do what is called um a class three cultural archaeological survey. Um, what that entails is going over any land that will be disturbed by construction of this D A F building and making sure there are no tribal or state historic relics or artifacts found on site. Um, I do not anticipate any as this site was already disturbed for previous construction. Um, but it's more of a formality that we need to do this survey for federal funding and to close out what is called a section one oh six environmental review by the state. Um, so we have a proposal for that. Um, Jim may talk about that later, but we are going to need to hire a archaeological company to do the survey in order to get the federal funding for the project. Sorry, I'm just looking over my notes to make sure I didn't miss anything. Yeah, I mean, I think that's pretty much the general overview of the project.
One of the things that we looked at here is between the plate and the D A F. Uh, the maintenance on the plate and tube settler was higher maintenance costs throughout going forward. Whereas the gap, basically, you're replacing brushes and washing brushes is about the only maintenance that you have, which is maybe at most an hour a day of somebody going out there and washing off the brushes. Whereas when the plate settlers, what was it, like every three months? You've got to pull it, wipe them down or whatever to do it. And also, we have a high energy cost too because those plates have to be electrified. So the maintenance side of it and the operating side, of course, more expensive when going to D A F. Whereas maybe the gap is going to be more on the up, on the front side, it's going to be less for longevity of that part.
Um, didn't you say that the D A F is going to cost twenty to thirty percent less than the plate?
Then, yes, the construction because of the building footprint.
So what is it, what is it, cost more?
The D A F equipment. So there's a D A F pre-con uh, excuse me, pre-treatment facility, which is the building plus all the equipment. The D A F equipment itself is slightly higher than the plate settler equipment, but the building needed to house a plate settler assembly is going to be twenty to thirty percent higher cost. Um, and to Jim's point, we did an O N M study and also a lifecycle cost. Um, yes, the the D A F system will use and will cost slightly higher to operate in terms of coagulants added, but the power cost is lower. Um, the upfront capital cost is also lower on a D A F system. So with all those factors going into play plus a loan with the, you know, three percent rate, over twenty years, there is a pretty large cost savings when you compare the two. You project that out with all the operations, the electrical cost, the chemical cost, and the upfront capital cost. Uh, so again, that was another justification for the system. Not to mention the pilot system, which worked really well for us when we brought it here, got good results. Um, yeah. Questions?
I think the electrical costs are going to continue to rise very quickly. So the D A F project option is better.
And to speak on electrical and pumping costs, the another reason we selected the location we did is we are going to try and use gravity or hydraulics the best of our ability in that we can get water from the lake to the D A F building, potentially all the way through treatment without having to pump it. Now, we may have to pump that to the existing plant to give it the pressure needs to the membranes. We're still working on those counts, but we are designing this and planning to, you know, reduce pumping and energy costs in any way we can to use the natural head in the water that we have from the lake all the way down to distribution.
Uh, are there any um hazardous waste concerns with the D A F? Uh, or skim off the blockular? Is there any concern with that? Is it a benign substance?
Yeah, so good question. The sludge waste coming off the D A F is mostly um total organic carbon, dissolved solids in the water, particulate matter, organic matter, and coagulants that were added to the water, which are not a hazard. Um, we're working with another treatment plant and they're actually able to take that sludge waste, dry it out, and then use that material for landscape or fill. Um, so that material, to answer your question, is not hazardous material um at this time. The state always changes their regulations, but no, it is not a hazardous waste. Yeah.
Any questions? Other big questions? Is this going to help with the flushing uh system too? Take an iron and manganese out? Have you all got a study that?
Uh, could you clarify flushing system?
Oh, it's flushing the distribution system.
Oh. Uh, I mean, our production of water increases. Our flow rate right now is what, one point five M G D at the max? We're going to get up to three M G D, so we're doubling the treatment capacity um of the plant and and other distribution system. So you'll have much higher flows going through your system. Um, I'm not sure if that answers the flushing of the pipe question, but we'll have higher flows, higher pressures.
I'm worried about the reduction of the iron and manganese coming out from the membranes.
We're also using chlorine dioxide upfront of the coagulants to oxidize some of those iron and manganese constituents. Um, and the D A F can also help remove some of those. Um, so overall, your affluent water coming out of the D A F will have much lower T O C metals, D V Ps, and all that. Um, turbidity is really what it it falls under the category of, and yeah, we've seen great productions of turbidity um that will remove and oxidize the iron and manganese as well.
Other questions? Uh, I have a question. I guess uh, the twenty percent to thirty percent difference in cost, for example. Now, imagine twenty years from now, twenty years ago, this platform was adequate. And now here we are. What about twenty years from now? Is it going, are we going to be back in the same boat we are now or is this plant going to push us forward?
Yes, it'll push us forward. The three M G D production rate that you can get out of this plant, we've we've projected that for now and for the future to meet future demand needs. Again, doubling treatment capacity and your water quality output. Um, the D A F system, we've seen other treatment plants operating for twenty-plus years with the infrastructure in place. It's it's definitely cutting-edge infrastructure. This will not be outdated or surpassed soon. Um, from my understanding, it's it's you're on the top of the line with these D A F systems, um, especially with operations and not having to really do much once it's operational. Um, so yes, again, the three point O M G D treatment is for now and for future needs. Um, the D A F system itself, top of the line, and it it should last for at least twenty to thirty years. Um, you know, some maintenance is is expected, but yeah, this is one of the only manufacturers in the in the world that does this, especially close to us. This is a A W C system, which was a Leopold Xylem system. They own the patent. Um, so it's a pretty sought-after technology. Not many people being able to produce it and have access to the patent. So uh, yeah, I feel very confident that this treatment system is adequate and planned for the future.
But I guess kind of my, I did see the the test and I I was impressed with how it worked. I guess kind of my concern is when this plant that we have was put in, it was considered to be state-of-the-art. Now we're finding out that it kind of maybe wasn't. We don't want to hear the same thing about the D A F.
Mm-hmm. Well, they change the regs all the time on us. We don't know what they're going to actually do. That makes it hard to to stay stay on top of that.
Hard to predict. What's hard to predict?
Well, that's one of the the reasons we're looking at going out through the the G A F queue as we're looking at the P F O S. It's going to be one of those that they're going to slowly tighten down on anyway. Uh, with that, with that being said, is with this D A F system, it's going, that water is going to be almost, we don't need to go through all filters, but we're still going to have to go through cleaners. Yeah, that's correct.
Uh, but one one more comment to your point. So the D A F system as designed, it it doesn't take much maintenance, and that's one of the benefits of it. And that also lets it continuously run for twenty, thirty years, you know? Doesn't have many moving parts, and what it does have is sort of out of the way of maintenance. Uh, so yeah, from what I've seen with these D A F buildings, they last a long time and don't require much effort. Um, and then to your initial point, maybe when the existing plant was built, it was running well. Um, however, one of the biggest issues we've seen, especially in summer demands, there's a lot of seasonality and change in the water quality in the lane, whether it's through the creek or what have you. The water quality is not consistent, and that's one of the biggest challenges for membranes to handle when your water quality is changing. Um, with these D A F systems, it's just a matter of more or less coagulants and just keep running. Um, so I think that is one of the issues we're trying to address in that variability in water quality is not an issue for a D A F system where that really can't impact your membrane. Um, so maybe that wasn't, you know, an issue back in the day when we built, but now we are seeing that be a full issue and want to address it with the D A F system.
Thank you. One more. Um, what about tenants?
I can honestly say I haven't looked into that, so I don't know.
I mean, we have colored water sometimes. Is is D A F uh even going to touch that or?
I know a lot of times there's can be pinkish color from the manganese in the water. And again, if we're oxidizing the iron and manganese and the metals upfront, that should mitigate that issue. Um, but I would have to look into that a little more.
And I think a lot of that color is coming from sediment and pipes. I don't know if that's going to, I don't know if that's going to resolve it or not, you know? In fact, initially, if we have a grade in production, it might cause a little bit extra. My thought would actually start with. To this, just because we're flushing, we're running more water.
Mm-hmm.
Anyway, okay. So with the uh, the funding and the design work and the art, that's already archaeological value. I know from experience that we're looking at, don't want to add. What's your best guess for a start data?
That's a good question. Um, so yes, little timeline, we got to get the archaeological study done. We are, at the same time, are going to be submitting the S R F state and the USDA federal funding applications. Um, we'd hope to hear back on the um environmental assessment is, which is the review of the cultural. If that passes, then that allows them to move through the applications quicker. Um, so with that all being said, I think the applications are going to be at least forty-five to sixty days out after they review the environmental assessment, which comes after the cultural survey. Um, the state then reviews a B E R basis of design report for all the construction. Um, it'll take forty-five days to review that. Um, from there, once we're approved by the state, we can go out to bid, probably four or five weeks for the bidding process. Um, then ordering the materials and and all that. I think we got, we're probably at least six months to a year out.
Mr. Chairman, you're referring to Mr. Bailey. Go ahead.
One of the things that I, Jim, and Gary, when we went to look at the system was as far as maintenance, everything is above the water. We don't have to get underneath the water, drain things to take care of it. If we have a problem, we are above the water and things can still work, but we're working above ground and and not uh that. So, and then something that Nate didn't bring up, the 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 building footprint. Uh, we got the D A F, but then we're going to leave room, the way I understand it, for the gap. So that footprint will be in that building. So when
That will take care of the tenants.
Yeah.
With the gap queue.
So that that's, you know, that's why I'm all for. I mean, most of our time is getting soaked and and whatever, but this system is for us, Gary, I, the guys, we're we're not in the water. It's all above and it's still accessible, but you can't.
And you're not using all the chemicals that we use when after cleaning filters, you know, the flush and uh the C I Ps and all of that stuff. That and you know, down and out to where you might do a C I P once a week instead of doing them every day. So what what's the reason not to use a D A F versus a plate system? Any?
Effectiveness, lower cost, lower footprint, um, lower electrical costs. The only cost benefit of a plate versus a D A F is slightly lower chemical cost um in that it takes less coagulants than a D A F system work. Um, and then just one last point about what you guys were saying about the G A F system, which is the granulated activated carbon uh for P F O S treatment. We would be pursuing grants for P F O S treatment to include that, but a secondary benefit is the taste and odor um removal through the G A F. Granulated activated carbon is is the best for that and the best for P F O S. So we kind of get a twofold benefit if we were to get funded for that.
And and so what is the probability we're going to hit this jackpot of grants and funding? What do you think?
So as Jim is ready to submit the applications, we split up the funding, half for USDA and half for S R F, the state funding. Um, I feel pretty good. Initially, we were requesting the full funding from one source. Um, they pretty much indicated splitting the funding by two sources increases our chances. Um, not to mention all these compliance and violations and enforcement orders we've received. Um, on one side, you don't want to see that, but on the second side, the more violations you have, the higher up on the list of funding you go because you are, you know, you need the funding more than others. So that is one thing I will say about the the funding side of things.
Also, also, they go on median household, household income, which we fall on the lower end of that. So right now, it opens us up for funding because we, I think their top is like sixty thousand for the unit household income, and we're at like fifty-three. So before we get more people in, we have the growth, I think, it's going to help us in that aspect.
Thank you.
Uh, one of the things that Nate had brought up was uh the for the research, he ended up getting two bids. One is from Midcap, and they won eight thousand two hundred and twelve dollars to come out and do the deal. And the other one was S W C A. Uh, they're looking at seven thousand five hundred in title.
Because this is the archaeological.
For the archaeological task. With that, with USDA, they will pay for engineering and stuff that has taken place through all of this process. So it would be backfilling the all these tests and stuff going on down there.
For half of that, I'll sign off on it being an Indian. We ain't never done nothing there.
How about a quarter?
All right, we'll go for a quarter.
Of course, due to jail.
You want me, Daniel, do you have any questions or any concerns that you need to add in?
Uh, no, I think Nate's done a great job. We do have um the funding plan, which gives some some more details about uh where the districts plan to apply for funding and um the possible sources of funding that we can share as well. Um, but yeah, so far, it's been all good.
So like Daniel was saying, there it is. We're 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 isolating right now on USDA revolving fund. We're looking at the B I L uh for deployment, but we also have U P A uh three other places that we look at going forward. We need to, if we want to get something in place. We needed a a report last Thursday for funding uh to satisfy our order. Uh, Nate was able to pull all of his stuff together and work together with Wes, Carolyn, and Daniel. We all sat down Thursday, or was it Thursday or Wednesday? Um, we had a video conference and we were able to get all the information and get it put in to send to the state and go forward with it uh for our funding package. And that's what we used is the USDA C Y B C B, or not, the revolving fund and uh W R S F parts, even revolving fund. So that's our main goal at this point, but like I said, as we go down the line a little bit further, uh, we can look at different funding to help pay for that twenty-five or twenty percent difference that we might need to go on. Questions? Anybody? Close, public. Hold on, Carolyn, you got something?
This is Carolyn.
This is Carolyn. Hey, I'm on the line too. So you guys, this is a public hearing and I think you've opened the public hearing, so just make sure we need to call for public comments. And see if anyone has comments before we can move on from this item as well.
Okay, the first thing that, uh, we're looking at is looking at trying to get an Amazon card. Uh, with all the shopping that we're doing, uh, credit card. It seems like we end up kind of almost passing it out at certain times of year and different things. Uh, Josh is really good at finding deals and, uh, things through Amazon. A lot cheaper than finding here or wherever. Uh, so that's one of the. Thanks Nate.
Thank you Nate.
You're on your way off? We're looking at that being, uh, we're looking to have another credit card. Because right now we just have one credit card, which is our master card. And a lot of times, like I said, if there is no room on it or something that might come up, that's an emergency or whatever. I think we would best, uh, if we had the Amazon card that we would do buy stuff and find stuff that are kind of cheap. From the south, we can blow that route, so just putting it on our credit.
So our purchasing has shifted from wholly directly to vendors, to using the credit card. Because a lot of our departments are talking around now for the best price. This would also give free shipping and a five percent, um, five percent back.
Is our, uh, any disadvantage? Any risks? Our auditors are cool with it?
Probably up to the board, so.
No, but our auditors, you think are, you feel are gonna be okay with it?
I believe, I, I believe they would, because.
You can see the increase of the shopping on the credit cards to different vendors, not the usual vendors that you use all the time. So now we're spending money by shopping around.
Um, so the only thing I'd be concerned with, and I'm sure it's insignificant, would be it's gonna be additional liability on our books. So therefore it's gonna go against our liability, you know, or, or debt ratio. Um, is it, it's probably gonna be insignificant, but, uh.
It, it wouldn't change. Right now, he's had the Amazon on our regular master card.
So it's not going to increase, you're going to spread it out between the two.
Basically, you, you want to get an Amazon card instead of using an MasterCard that you're using now. Or you use both?
Well, both.
Because like last week, I ordered these, my card. Ejected, the Colorado City card, while I called alone, you have. Something wrong with it, but I tried to get through it, and finally we worked through it, and it's because my card, somebody had. Made like a budget, like a charge on it, and shut the card off. But I ended up using my own personal card to make sure that we got these in for the management of the office. So that's why you'll see them on the bills, and I think that would eliminate that possibility from the auditors looking at. While you're using the credit card, then you have.
The disadvantage in our, I know we couldn't use my credit card, but. As a finance director, I don't like to see a lot of reimbursements to. I think that should just be an essential protection basis. And I think it's the awful thing that we love.
See, but so I guess as far as watching payables. Yes, we see MasterCard in the payables and they're quite often, they're not very good descriptions, so I'd usually worry that's wrong. If we're going to get an Amazon card, could we somehow code it better so that we can see the. Where they got, where they're going, where those purchases are going.
I think they're limited in the software system. Regardless of what memory it is, there's only so many examples.
Rather than, right now, it'll say MasterCard, and we won't, we can't tell where it went. Could you just make it, uh, AZ or something, and then include where it went? Don't you get them out of space? That's a book you can get. Yeah, that, that's the, yes, it's okay. Our, our credit card has five thousand dollars in it. I have four, twenty-five hundred on mine and she has four hundred on hers. And a lot of times, you know, we have a big item, many more, it seems like a thousand dollars. Is that quick? And so if you have two or three different things that we run across, uh, it, it hurts us. Especially, you know, for buying pets parts and stuff for neighbors, because we don't go through, uh, quarantine for. Some of that stuff, because it's twice as much as where we can get it someplace else. Now, we would continue to have that five thousand dollar limit, but even on the, on the Amazon part too.
I think for the MasterCard, I believe she does a spreadsheet and uploads it. When we put, we include that in the bill, definitely like an addendum for the MasterCard that we're giving more detail.
Other comments, questions? All right, let's move on, Jim. Okay, uh, CCA has seen reviews, again, I don't know, uh. So you brought in something else.
Was there a motion to, uh, for the applications for USDA and SRF?
No, I haven't set in the agenda items. When we start the meeting, this is just the study session.
Oh, okay.
All right.
Got it.
Thank you. Okay, I didn't know. Because to me, looking at what she brought, it would be. There's many properties around that, where our fours that went down. Put it, put the code in the book, but it's not one, so it's, uh. I don't know what they were, we still. That's correct. Okay, so. That's it, right? That was it, and that she wanted to, uh, review for soon. Break one to talk about that. Yeah, go ahead, Ray.
So, um, I mean, we've all discussed it a little bit. Uh, basically, I would like to see us in, um, not too far in the future, I'm talking within the next meeting or two. Um, I would like to see some bids and some solutions to this two-inch line. We need to at least get started. I'm not certain that we have the money to replace everything at once. Uh, but we definitely, I believe, need to get this ball rolling. Uh, getting that line, um, fixed. Uh, where this doesn't happen in the future.
One of the things, uh, we can do, probably. Is, you know, see if we can run a, a video of that.
The, the old existing sewer line was clay tile. All right, when they put it in, they backfilled it. There was no bedding, they just pushed all the rock right on top of it. Um. And that area. Is very high in groundwater. And the reason they abandoned that was because it was overtaking the. Sewer plant at that time. So Clyde Young and them did this two-inch high-pressure sewer line. Um. Did they think that we were gonna have this many houses on it? I don't, I don't think they did. But the idea of it. Being high-pressure is that each house, when it engages and pushes it down. Then it'll push it so far, the next house comes on and it, it just keeps moving it all the way down. Now then, if we were to go in. That's gonna take somebody smarter than us to know how much pressure each location is gonna be. So if we increase it, the size, is that still going to. Move, be able to move that flow to the end? You see what I'm saying? The bigger line, it's not as, as pressurized. So, my other thought. Yes, the old line, we would have to have somebody come in with a big camera, not, not our little one. And run that. Um, can they get all the way through? I gotta be honest with you, I don't know. But I can take you to a manhole that shows how much groundwater is going through that line. And it's nothing but groundwater, there's no sewage pumped up and it's. This probably. Um. Zero point one four to zero point one five. Going through that whole groundwater and that's all it is.
Where's that end up? Where does that, uh?
If you're familiar with our, our, we have a, our maintenance shop, a water sewer shop. We have a little pond that's beside it. So that comes out of there, goes into our little pond by our shop. And then from there, it just goes back into Greenhorn Creek. But we have that settling pond that says, in case something bad happens, but. It, so it goes from North Park, under the highway, behind True Value, into the pond. And then into Greenhorn Creek. And, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, so what, so that two-inch line doesn't go all the way to the, the plant, right? It dumps into a larger line somewhere, correct? So my idea was to start where it dumps into that larger line, that's when we start replacing pipe. We start where it dumps into that larger line and work our way back, replacing that pipe in sections. Because then you should never interrupt the pressure.
No, no, you can't, no, yes, but you can't fill that with the pressure from above, true? We have to have pressure coming from the top to the bottom to get it.
Yes.
Yes.
So, but it dumps into a gravity feed line.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so starting from that gravity feed line, we turn it into gravity feed line, from there, working our way back. You see what I'm saying?
Well, no, I understand what you're saying, so what you're saying is to eliminate the high-pressure system?
In sections.
In sections.
And we start at the end where the high-pressure system isn't interrupted, it stays working. But then it dumps into the gravity system where we just slowly replace the system going back. Now, this is probably going to be more engineering involved than I realize, because that pressure system can go up hills. Where the gravity system cannot.
Right, and, and, and that's where I'm, in my mind. The way it was designed with the grinder pumps that were put in originally. Puts out X amount of pressure on discharge side. And that's how they maintain that pressure in that to move. The water downhill. Because it's, it's not slope, I mean, well, it is in a way, but it starts at the top and goes down. But if we increase that, what happens to the grinder pumps? If they only put out X amount of pressure, is that water gonna lay there and then we have another issue? Because we cannot, we lose our flow.
Because the, the line has to be full for the pressure to work.
Yes, yes, sir.
Uh, some questions and, and I wanted to ask some questions and I don't mean to upset anybody or piss anybody off. But, uh, this issue just seemed, from what I understand, the system's been, been in place for quite a while.
Yes, sir.
And it only recently, in the last year, year or so, has blocked up.
Oh, no, no, no.
It, it's been blocked more than.
Oh, we've, we've had, we've had blocks in there many times. And it, it's just one of them.
It's a Schedule forty, two hundred and eighty PSI?
It's, it's Schedule forty, yes, sir.
Okay. Two inch?
Two inch, um, we've had, this wasn't the first time.
Okay, because I, I.
I've been on it since I was on the golf course, and that was many years ago.
Something happened, uh, last spring and then the three times this, this last winter.
Right, and we, we've had other issues.
What has been the primary source of blockage?
Grease, grease, fog.
How is our release written for the tub out?
It's, they pump their grease traps two times a year.
Two times a year?
We have bought, uh, some, uh, material that's live active enzyme. We can put in there and possibly eat some of that grease out of there.
How, how is the grease interceptor condition line, so it was put in ninety-three?
No. No. I, I can't get it, it was after that, because we had what, we had a blockage. Um.
Has it, has it been inspected by anybody? I mean, is it working properly?
Yes.
Okay.
No, it works, it, it works like it's supposed.
And it's pumped only twice a year though?
Yeah, I mean.
Can, can that be increased to every three months at least? Well, I'm not saying this, but I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to eliminate the simplest things.
Well, um.
Just after, just after all of this happened. So then, always last time, she says it was due for a block, she had steel coming in, uh, riser. Come down and do it. And he said, he doesn't know why she had it done, because they don't, there wasn't that much grease in it. Because she does, whereas in the past, they didn't do it as much. And that's what's, could have been some of that residual that's breaking all over.
So the, the grease interceptor bay is probably not the problem, is what you're saying?
No, it, it's just.
What I'm seeing on the system map is that we have a branch that runs down, except. Uh, Woodbine, it heads down North Parkway to West Side.
Correct.
That's a dead end, is there a lift station on that at all?
Where, where do you look numbers, where you're at? There's no lifts.
We're totally dependent on grinder pressure to pump this back uphill.
All the way around. Every, this line right here, you have, uh, this, there's a new house here, which is not shown, they're on it.
New house here.
Yeah.
There's new house here, but.
But no, every, every house that's on this green line.
Yeah.
Has an engine.
Right, and so we're relying on all that grinder pressure from each house only.
To get all the way down to here.
Push this sewage uphill, because North Parkway's uphill to this point.
Yes, sir.
Is there any way we can, if this two-inch and tied into main?
No.
Why?
Well, we could, but.
And divide this load and, and allow this here.
You're, you're.
And you're gonna have, you're gonna have your house load divided in your other house that you divided, you're not gonna be. And you're gonna have, you're gonna have your house load divided in your other house that you divided, you're not gonna be fighting for it.
No, I mean, yeah, if you wanna.
And that would be, that would be, and the only solution, if that doesn't work, then we can move into. Brigs.
I mean.
Rebuild the line because if this doesn't work, obviously there's some other issue.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I. We're not gonna spend the money.
We're only about what, three hundred feet, this main line, if it's this dead end.
Probably.
Just across the backside of the port.
Yeah, yeah, you and you could, you would have to block it off up here at this center. And then this still goes down, your house dumped down.
You couldn't, you couldn't hook it all this way.
Uh, no. You could, no. With their grinder, with their grinder, their grinder pressure, no, you would be. Better off going downhill rather than trying to come up there.
So then the only, if you even had to keep the clubhouse on this line.
Yeah.
You're gonna have all these houses.
Well, you've got, you've got, what you've got right here, you've got one, two, three. Five, six, seven, eight houses.
But you're also not doing a lot of pumping either, you're slugged up here. But that's kind of an issue.
No. So you have eight houses.
Have your your house load. By dividing the line and tying it in. Because.
I mean, it could be, yeah, but we would have, we're gonna have to dig up every house and change the flow. The check valves and the check valves and basically in order with these check valves that are in there. Which can't be in here, I don't know where they're at. That's something I have now.
They have a whole set of.
Oh, yeah, this whole line has. And that's sometimes what causes the problem. So we would have to dig and we shut this off. We would have to dig and open up easy house. Change the life that goes into it. It shoots it to the north and changes treatment of its valve. In order to get it to put it to south.
Sure, I I mean, you're adding gravity to the the equation, you're not lighting gravity.
Well, we're. Yeah, but I mean, that's, it can be done, but it's. Yeah, but I mean.
We like, it sounds to me like what we do, do is engineer.
Yeah.
Do you have any clues to how much pressure is on that line?
No, probably. One to five to thirty-five.
We don't know.
Yeah, most crap. No, it was based off of, I blew up in my face, so don't mind.
Oh, God, I'm sorry, but that's that's a horrible thought.
Oh, I, it it's.
I'm sorry, but you can use some engineering.
Well, somebody, yeah, I mean, what he's talking about. Can be done, but each house has to be dug up and changed.
Well, the problem is, there's still empty lots. We're gonna have to go to this.
Not really.
Huh?
Not real.
There's an empty lot right here for sale.
Yeah, and if they're gonna have to go to this lot back here. There's a sewer line back. It is, trust me, it's there. Where that go? Back on Little Snake, oh, yeah, there's a sewer line back here. This was, they'll have to bring water from North Park. To their house, but their sewer needs to go to the back. These two houses back here. That was before my time, they let them tie uh on the fresh.
These aren't lots, these are gonna tie to shack.
They gotta tie into the back, we can't, we're we're maxed out as far as my opinion.
So, so as we move, we gotta move forward. Go ahead, go ahead, um, so, uh. So, um, what about having a construction, so we've got several guys in here, several guys that are in the boundary that we can get quotes from. Why don't we bring them in here, Stargazer, there's two others that do sewer, and say, hey, this is the problem we got. What's your guys' solution to this problem and how much is it gonna cost us? Because some of these guys have been doing this stuff for years and years and years and they're probably gonna have a whole lot more ideas. Than any of us here on the border. Um, and it's not gonna cost the same thing. Bring them in, show them what we got. We're gonna have to get engineering involved, obviously, engineering will have to get involved, but these guys do this stuff for a living. So they're probably gonna have some pretty good ideas before we even go to it. And just get some quotes from them. Hey, this is what we got, what's your solution to fix this problem? I mean, it might be as easy as putting clean outs in, I don't know.
No, like I said, each house from what. Uh, Mr. Rose was talking about, each house has got to be dug up. Because when it comes out of that grinder pit, it has a sweep, so that when it pumps, it makes the water go to the north.
So, and the only pressure that's put on there is from the residential grinder pits.
Yes, sir.
There is no lift station whatsoever.
No, we have zero lift, it's solid all the way down.
Line lift station on one of these locations?
No.
No?
No, there is no lift station.
I mean, installing one to to get the pressure to where it needs to be, is is there enough houses to get get enough pressure for it to run down the line?
That's way over my head. Well, the thing is, putting putting another lift station in there. You're gonna have to drop that and surface it and refump it.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, just being simple about it, uh.
But meanwhile, why don't we just get a couple of construction companies together and say, hey, here's our problem, guys. What's your solution and how much is it gonna cost?
I I feel we should look at a camera first and see what we have left. Before we we go crazy, digging's gonna be brutal all the way around there for the homeowners and us. It's not gonna be an instant thing, no matter what you do.
Well, yeah, we got the crew to do it.
We don't.
We're gonna have to contract it out.
Right.
So that's the reason why I'm saying bring the contractor in and let them look at it, let them give us ideas, those contractors probably have a camera. More likely, I would think so.
Well.
Well, I know that Stargazer does, because when they did my sewer, they shot one down.
Yeah, but but that's a a little too. We we need, if you're talking cammering, the original sewer line, we need one on track. It's not a push camera, maybe Steve Lewis, yeah, somebody with a track camera. Which is a big unit, which is really expensive.
But this isn't something that we're gonna figure out, that's why I'm saying, let's get the experts involved.
Yeah. Okay.
So also, we're servicing those houses in unit fourteen, right? What was, do you know where where Bobby Delaney used to live, those on the?
Yes, they let them tie in to the pressure system instead of going out back. That shouldn't, in my opinion, never happened, but I wasn't in a position to argue about it.
And and so what I, what I would propose is that we need to start looking at policy regards. To whom gets to connect to that pressure line.
Yeah.
We're certainly worried about the five or six, four, five or six lots that are saleable in the in North Park. Uh, but there are dozens of lots that. Would be thinking that they can do the same thing.
Yeah.
And we also need to make sure that we have a. Plan for the next time it backs up, because what Mr. Bailey's saying, it backs up. It backs up, it backs up again and again, and he's he knows that, and we don't really have a a back truck for it.
No.
And we should have a back truck available.
One of the, one of the things that we're looking at and. We're gonna have to dig it up because we couldn't get any sweeps at the time, uh, we ended up putting in teams. And bringing the sand up with the cap, so that way we can jet from that area and move. So we're looking at that aspect of how can we do without not having to dig it up at the time, but. We're gonna have to dig it up probably one more time, two foot in sweeps. So that way we can just jet it without digging it up and keep moving down the line.
My my point is that the last time we had Ross who was filling in the people's yards.
Yeah.
We need to be able to contain that with a vehicle.
Right.
And you have got to know somebody that's got one for rent.
Yeah, we can do that, we do know, I had a guy that came in, he just bought one. And asked, where'd you get it? Because I've been looking for a month.
Well, I don't care if we buy one, by the way, but we need to have a plan, I mean, I would hate to be. Be living in North Park thinking that anytime there could be a blockage and I could have sewage flowing in my yard. I think we need to have a plan in place, when somebody says, hey, I got a real problem here, we can go take care of it instead of pumping it. On to somebody else's property, that's not right.
No, I agree.
We need, we need to have that ready to go tomorrow.
Yeah.
So the back truck that that is rental, is that available twenty-four seven?
I'd have to call and talk to him.
Because if it's not, we should look at either repairing what we have or getting.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at right now, it's starting to get.
I can tell you from what I've heard in the neighborhood, this continues, there's gonna be a civil suit.
Yeah, yeah.
And you need to have some kind of plan of action.
Yes.
And the state's gonna be honest, we're gonna have a whole new set of state problems.
Yeah.
It would be very smart for a city manager to work out an emergency contract with that band.
Yeah.
Where all we gotta do is pick up the phone and he's contracted to take care of it, right there and then.
What about, why don't we have a scheduled for jetting that on? You can't, in order to jet it, you have to dig it up.
And that's what we're trying to do is. Try and put in a clean out.
And then we have a schedule.
That way, then we can probably schedule it as every six months or every three months.
Well, yeah, why not get that done?
Because we do, we do that on some of our lines, like businesses, I mean, we do that, we have a schedule. Every three months or six months, and we jet that line which runs from the bank down that road. Uh, for Mr. Bailey, um, if we do put in clean outs, don't we lose our pressure every time we go to jet a line?
Um, no, because we're adding pressure from the water from the jet.
Right.
But that's.
Can, can you guys have a solution or something like this for us for next board meeting? And a emergency action plan so that we can, we can approve it, we know it's in position?
Yeah. Yeah, I. Yeah. Yeah, no, Michael just bought this that last Saturday. And he's construction, so it's kinda hard to say, maybe he might have his getter on a job somewhere. I mean.
But can't we rent one from uh?
Um, there's no place to rent them, they are in high demand.
Yeah. Well, not a getter, though, I was gonna say, we did budget in that trailer. Yeah, and that's, that's what we're looking for, and that's what T has, it's got a part of all the trailer, which that would be what we need. It's just like what we had before.
No.
Can we borrow this? I don't know, that one, we gotta, we make that book called World Food yet?
The RTC. I think it's, it's out of. It's way out somewhere.
Yeah.
I mean. Back in my day, I fought like tooth and nail not to sell it, but I got overrun, but. Uh. They're in high demand, they're hard to find. And we can do, we'll talk to Michael, um.
They're called, uh, Caterpillar rents already on it. They had one, well, they don't have one, and Scott, they said, well, do you have anybody that has one that wants to sell? That is in fairly good shape, uh, being on big iron. You don't see them in an auction, sorry.
So it's, yeah, we can come up with something, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Um, and talk to Michael and and see what.
Well, if we got an emergency action plan in place, then it's real easy for everybody.
Sure, yeah, no, I I agree, I'm not, I'm just saying that it's. The one piece of equipment might be hard to get a hold of. I mean, you you just don't know.
So that's kind of the plan.
Yeah.
Ray, would you be willing to kind of monitor this for the, until next meeting, see how we're doing? I'll call Jim every day. No, I don't think it's excessive here. He'll text me every day. Haven't heard anything.
And then you can uh, kind of.
And that's a little bit.
Anything else here?
Well, reading in the chair, I've got uh, one on the board here.
In order to business the board to be productive and effective in that expedition span, it is necessary that all persons present that came to meet are skilled toward the board's staff and each other. Conducted, period, certain or aggressive, will not be tolerated. Shall you speak in our order, the most defensive members of the assembly are not subject. Such behavior shall constitute the perpetuity of your right to remain in contempt of the. The board of office, the board of attention by call, or any board member, including the chairperson. Results will be announced at the meeting by the chairperson or one with usual, being escorted out of the meeting by the public board. So we, we're sincere, don't we?
I'm gonna be first?
Yeah. Well, good evening, everyone, um. My name's Greg Coulter, I'm resident in town, got double A operator license, done this a long time and. These horse mains that you're talking about, I'm dealing with those right now and. Uh, I've seen them where they don't have houses on them, what they wind up doing is building a redundant. Horse main line, because all these horse mains get clogged up with grease, rags and grit. And by gosh, if you don't have that redundancy, there are some places that don't. And they're budgeting to get them put in, but one like your houses here, there's a place called Horseshoe Bay, Texas. Flat level land all the way across, everything, every house on that whole system is on the same horse main. And what what they did was is uh. Everybody knows where the lift stations, the grinder pumps are, and they got a light on them too. So that if that grinder pump failed because there's too much pressure and it can't pump out, the light turns on. They call up the district, district drives out and fixes it.
We have the same time.
That quick, yeah, and it's really cool because now everybody knows, you know, it has the light and.
There's either one thing, it's either the grinder pump or the lines clogged.
Yeah, yeah, and. And I tell you what, it's a full-time job for them because, you know, it's the longest and out there, it's a golf course community. The all of horse main. Uh, but that's not really what I'm here, what it talks about. Another one, just so you know, they they claim there's four times a year. And it goes straight up and all the houses are on it, it's been that way forever, all of a sudden now. It just got worse and worse and worse, and of course you're getting greased, rags, hair. Everything in the world in there, so now they're on schedule to jet it out four times a year. And we do it together. So, yeah, and it's not a fun job. But what I wanted to talk about tonight was is, I really liked the letter. Yeah, Ray, this one from you, awesome, that's not, good job, that keeps me informed as a customer. On what's going on, I don't know how y'all feel about writing them, but maybe it opens your eyes up a little bit too and. Kinda has to make you keep in there. The next one is about the communication that we were talking about at the last one. And I still think the uh reverse nine one one, having a system set up so you know when to call. We run across systems all the time, the dad gun card goes out, well, what's the lead time on those cards, six weeks to a month? Oh, we got them over in Nebraska. Oh, we got them over in Nebraska. Guess what? It's your hot shot and we go get it. And if you can get that reverse nine one, if you know that's critical and have that set up like we were saying in that emergency plan. Another thing it does, does it worry the citizen? Well, it's better to be worried ahead of time than, oh, we only got three hours worth of water left. Plus it keeps reminding the citizen that water is a finite thing. It's not an infinite and it's hard to find. And the last one, we'll say on those uh. On this uh grinder pumps, you can make it a policy that these pumps have to have a grinder. That they have to produce this much P S five. So when you get it engineered and designed. They'll build it out for the entire build out or whatever you want. And they'll say, no, these houses, like Greg was saying, can't go on it because we won't have the pressure. But that's always been an engineer. That's what I say. That's pretty sophisticated. And like say Texas was flat. So it didn't have, you know, thirty, thirty pounds of pressure. But you can put that into your grid too, into your logs. And man, what a time to get to be a member of A W W A. This is their uh article from there. And wouldn't you know, they got asset management in there. You know what Scott's working on? Did y'all read that on page nineteen? That's what it's about. The, the main lines in Aurora, the sewer line. And Aurora, it's got so complicated and so difficult now. Aurora has. They're changing the way that they're negotiating their criticality and when they're gonna do the maintenance and how. And now they're looking out over a one-year period, a two-year, a five-year. And a ten-year period to have their engineers relook at these. And they got one thousand five hundred feet of main line. Sewer mains. So they got their hands full. Even with that kind of money, they don't have the manpower to do this. Nor do they have the engineers and the affordability. That's why they're looking at that. It's a great article and it'll tell you what they're using. But what they used actually is uh. Tetra tech. Familiar with them. That's uh engineering, highly sophisticated, and they specialize in that. I don't think we got the capital for that.
That's gonna cost more than our pre-treatment.
But this is, this is what you can look at and you can look at engineering, you can look at other things. They're also using uh granite for a computerized maintenance management system. Right now we got diamond maps that'll carry a little bit. Is that enough? Well, we gotta get everything done and see what exactly our assets are, where they are, the condition they're in. And uh, that's where we come up difficult because if Greg's out there jetting these lines, let's say we get the jitter. We get a brand new jitter that runs every time and it's got, we felt tread on the tires. And you go out there and start doing these. Do you have time to sit there and fill out that asset? And it's all NASCO rating now. Everybody's using this NASCO. Do you have time to go take these two-year classes for NASCO and learn? It's gonna be tough, but once you get it, you can classify them as you're doing it. It's gonna take you longer. But now you know what you have and like everything's what I'm ready. Everybody wants the plan. So you're not redoing it and you're not putting out fires. And laugh, but over there on page seventeen on that thing, you'll see there's workforce planning. There's new groups coming in, right? And the kids are actually young. They're like you when you started. I got time to learn that stuff and they can apply it and put it together. Y'all are actually in a good position. You got guys, two guys here who know these and inside and out like back of their tail. And they'll, you'll have some young kids coming in that'll say, Greg, turn it down. I gotta classify this first. But that's all I wanted to tell you about here.
Can I ask you a question? Um, you're talking about these large golf course communities that are on the pressurized system. Um, do those people, when they move into that area, do they get a pamphlet or a brochure or? Or some kind of document that tells them how to act on that system?
Absolutely.
Okay, see, that's one thing that I don't think we do.
Yeah.
Is that we should, every homeowner in that area, because obviously somebody missed the message. Uh, every homeowner in that area should get a pamphlet that says how to act with this type of system. That's what I think.
But that's a specific area with specific people.
Right.
And you can say, hey, we're gonna put these in this first time. And this is where y'all gotta make the law. At this golf course community. The uh district puts it in. And they replace it. And guess what? On that G I S map, it's put in, hey, look, this house uses thirty-six in three years. This house uses two. Why? Now you're working with real data and could that customer be educated or what are you gonna do?
Greg or I guess Mr. Bailey, um, any pressurized systems do we have in Colorado?
Just come on.
Just North Park?
Yeah.
That's wild.
It just one. Well, it sounds like when it goes down, it's full time job.
Yeah.
Well, I appreciate y'all listening.
Thank you, thank you. But just real quick, there's another idea here. Um, how many of those houses could you taking off of this pressurized system and put on the systems behind this?
Two.
There's just two?
Yeah.
There's just two, it probably wouldn't be worth it. But um, if there was more than two, then it might be worth.
That could make a difference, yeah.
You know, it might be worth having some of these houses, cause that's not very expensive to put in a sewer system to the back. It might be worth, you know, taking them off the pressure line and putting them on the ground.
Well, we only have two.
Anything else?
No. And that uh, minute shows that we have a full farm, all board members present. Can I get approval of the general?
I think a motion is this time that we approve the general.
We'll be checking, I'll say to I. Close, we have a general. Approval of the past minute. As going happening for listening, you all have yes. We'll do that next meeting?
Yeah.
Alright. Would you have bill payable?
Yes.
I make a motion at this time to repay the bills.
We'll be checking, discussion questions?
I just had one uh question, item thirty-seven, two fifty. These are uh bond principal payments to banks and law. Uh, is this the, did we talk about this last meeting?
Last meeting was the uh crypto loan. So this is the bond.
Okay.
It's one per year, so that's why you haven't seen it.
Okay, and so how many more years do we own that forever?
Twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Okay, that's two hundred thousand dollars. I just thought it.
And it's gonna go up next year. Because we came down our crypto loan and they're paying it off this year. That one goes up. That's probably structural decline.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Once a year, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Other questions? Right above that, we have a payment to potential. Yes, that is uh C T F funds through Valley First. That was C T F from Buffalo. They received a hundred and fifty thousand dollars last year for Valley First. Uh. As a grant, so it has to come through us to you pay and we give reimbursed that from Buffalo account. But what, what uh, what did they did? Engineering on the fields and getting stuff together to move forward. We're placing the other grounds and on uh. All the research that presented. So Valley First, a contractor with the potential to do the engineering. Yes, um, uh, and similar, and the project. I see.
This money they have to them, not to us.
Yeah, it just goes through us. It just goes through us. It has to come through the districts since the district owns the property and it's uh.
It involves us, but doesn't involve us.
Yeah. Um, okay, then another question I have is uh, we have a big chunk again for the workshop golf course. For the gas. Yeah, and I went through that. I talked to Mike today. Make sure that he isn't leaving the bottom door open. To the college, he said, and he says, no, it isn't. He says, but uh, the bedroom is a lot warmer. I don't know, I'll have to go over check on yet to see if those. For the stats are, should be. Why are we paying for dining? Well, that's part of the building. Our heating system is for the coal building. It's hot water base, but like I said, also the pump went out in the middle of. That cold spell except that's where Jeremy, that's why you have Jeremy Wilcox for uh. We were, we've been told that the clubhouse or the cafe is paying their own utilities. They're paying their own utilities for their cooking and all of that. They ask for. The hot clubhouse itself, it's all under one border. And I've explained that before. Good.
So. How big is the clubhouse? Maybe ten thousand square feet.
Probably, yeah.
Somewhere in that neighborhood?
A hundred by a hundred roughly.
Yeah.
I don't know, cause you got that diagram that's jacked off. You probably.
I mean, I don't understand. And, and a boiler, a, you know, a system like we've got in there is supposed to be a pretty efficient way of heating.
Once.
But eighteen hundred dollars. For natural gas, for heating, is insane.
Yeah. Then what needs to be done too is replace the sliding glass doors and put in more efficient windows. And that will help assist a lot of it too.
Does that have any insulation when you see them at all?
Um, it has exactly. I'm gonna say an inch and a half.
That's what it was.
And it's not insulation. It's actually particle board.
Wouldn't it be who must, uh, money wise? To start a budget in the golf course to start renovating that building and getting it insulated and. Um, because eighteen hundred bucks a month, guys, uh, that adds up pretty darn quick.
That's, that's one of the, the aspects that would be brought to me during the budget meetings. That uh. Hopefully this year we can put in for C T F funds for windows, uh, things like that that need to.
Insulation?
Yeah. For energy efficiency. Anybody else have a question?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes, Greg?
Yeah.
We don't have an operational uh operational report. They have. Uh, put in a letter for the update progress, progress report to uh Mr. Harry. As to where we're going. Uh, I did apply for a FEMA grant. Uh, to Rattamis, uh, that we are interested in. It's only a sixty-five percent, fifty-five percent match. So this way USDA at least we have another one that we can work out. The only thing is, is with the FEMA grant to him, we cannot have uh federal funding. So we do have to, so we have to find some points out to add the extra funding. Uh. Right now, I just got through with Mr. Godwin. Uh, we're supposed to be getting. It was like forty-two thousand dollars back that we paid out for engineering on uh R J H. That we will be getting back to within the next couple of days. Uh, so that I'll hopefully, uh, will be given, probably a little bit from R J H. Uh, what we said we did in the expert.
Yeah.
Uh. The stuff that we, uh, R J H did before uh November approved. All of that we can tell as funding for uh our match, which is almost about forty-three thousand dollars. Uh, that they will release towards our match for that fifty, eight, eight hundred thou, the, of the match. That's where that's going. We're, we're on our way with the, the, the damn stuff. Uh. As far as readings, you have readings for uh the seventeenth and the twenty-fifth. I know Greg just did one today, but I did put it in there. Uh, P one, two, the seventeenth, the seventeen nine and the twenty-fifth, the seventeen nine, they're both dry. P three is white on it. Uh, P four, you have twenty-one point one and twenty-one point two for last week. Uh, the seventeenth you had, and P five, twenty-one point one. Uh, P six is dry and they still have twenty-six point one. P eleven, you have twenty-one point eight and uh twenty-one point seven on eleven. Uh, P twelve is twenty-two point one and twenty-two point one on twelve, no change. Uh, my global on the twenty-seventh was fourteen three. Uh, on the twenty-fifth was fifteen eight. Without storing anymore.
No, sir. I, I shut during that bad cold spell when we're below zero. I shut the head gate in, sent it all down the creek because when it's cold and it smells like that. Freezers and then we're out there.
Where ice down.
Ice down and breaking ice and so I just turned it back in. You can jam.
Monday.
Monday. So I'm putting water back in.
I'm serious.
But yeah, I mean. It's, it's not fun to be out there breaking ice trying to keep it off the road and everything else.
Thanks.
So uh, the other for the seventeenth and the twenty-fifth. Uh, seventeenth you're at fourteen point three, twenty-fifth is uh come fifteen point eight. Four inches dry in both places. On the seventeenth, you have two hundred and fifty milligrams per minute. And the twenty-fifth, you only have two hundred milligrams per minute. Uh, your sequel's dry and dry. Water gets stayed consistently at point one. Uh, Pender's dry, dry, they were both done by Frank. Uh, as for the newsletter, I threw in, I completed the newsletter. Uh, putting it there for you guys to review. If anything, maybe you need to add or want to add, let me know.
I kept it, kept it to one page, but I did miss a word. On the second paragraph, last line, if you have and found it, should be the word Ben, B E N, B E E N.
I can put it down, last line.
Other items have been found and blocked. Just got one. Second paragraph, last line. Five words from the.
Other is the, the, uh, why?
Other item.
It's in the number.
Well, you have it at the beginning of the sentence, that it has been reported back. Algae show, underground, sandstone products, lights, and other items. I did add, uh, also on your new websites. And right now, our, our uh, Colorado City M D dot org. When we do go into Colorado City M D, Colorado dot gov, it automatically shoots you to our new website, so. Basically, we want to go straight to it, etc.
Our new website's still being worked on.
No, it's, it's up and running.
Is the uh, Gray's name is on the board of directors?
It isn't, okay, I'll go through it and check it, make sure. It's annual, you know, at one point, he was on there, but it was like on, you were the main focus and. Cause I thought it didn't. I'll, I'll check that and make sure.
So it's all right if it's not there. I take the phone calls.
For your operation report, are we uh, up to date on our enforcement homework issues? Yes, everything is up to date, uh, if you look. When we go into the uh. The attorney's information, I have that letter, uh, that meeting. Is scheduled for the seventh, I believe. Right, yeah, it's the seventh. From eleven to two on the appeal that have come through. If you look at it, it gives you a list of, like, whether to have a group for appeals and what we need to. What, deadline extensions, etc., that we would need to, uh. Alright, and the, our, our funding, are we, we keep talking about what we're trying to do, trying to get in from. Uh, oh, we actually, is there an ending to this, well, we're gonna get it. So we need to try to get all these surveys and all the things done. That needs to be, when we'll, we'll know. Uh, cause that, all that information needs to be looked at when, rounds and.
Any rocky pit.
I'm looking, hopefully, by May, that we would have a certain D S to.
Twenty-four?
Twenty-four. Cause I just, we had a meeting today with Kate and uh, Mike Weber. Uh, make sure that his footprint and. That footprint on match and how it's gonna tie in or uh, water coming from the light because they're gonna take. The cycle out of the light that was there, you know, that big ground deal. It's gonna be actually either on the other side of the road or up higher. Because that's why we're losing cycle is because when we do get too much water in it, we lose. The ability for it to blow off air and things like that, so, uh, that's why it's gonna be ruined. So everything is, trying to work everything together to make sure it matches.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Uh, and, and I wanna to piggyback on, on Mr. Chairman's uh, question. Um, I would like to know a little bit about the structure of your connections with people and, and grants. Um, you seem like you're the central focus of it, as you should be. But is, is uh, NOCO doing the grant writing?
Some of it, they, they've helped in grants, research, and work too.
And who else do grant writing or grant seeking?
Uh, nobody.
You and NOCO.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I want.
Um, anybody else? Okay, so. Uh, who's the next on the newsletter? I guess we, we got time.
Yeah.
Anything to update on this?
Uh, I was gonna ask. Uh, Jim, you got a bid for the order?
I did get a bid from Will Liggers, I'm waiting for Kate, I probably, I just spent with Kate today. On sizes of the wings and valves and stuff, so I can give. Kate the information we need to get the, the bids in for her.
So angry you ordered all the valves and parts.
We haven't ordered them yet, I'm wanting, cause I know usually Kate wants to do that to them, cause their valves and. What they do, whereas Little Lakers, they would rather don't have less by the valves and the parts and pieces. Because then we get the perimeter shot.
So it's gonna depend on this bid, I suppose. Is there been a delay or anything to get balance, is that an issue?
A little, a little.
So we're still shooting for March?
Looking at March, I think we're gonna get, yeah.
So what are we talking about?
Uh, the replacing the light, shut off, skirt branch.
Okay, so this is the real deal?
Yes.
Have they talked to us yet?
Nope.
Maybe you should talk to them and see if they wanna pay for it.
Yeah, that'll work.
So. And if we meter that.
For our cap, for that reader.
Is there going to be, and I think there's a, is there gonna be a cap be involved with that? Eight inch cap?
He's probably looking at ten thousand bucks.
No.
For the meter?
For the P. And the cap were six inch. But it's an eight inch, so I'm, Trump said this before. Is that, is that what was referred to as valve for golf course?
Yeah. I, I just put it there because I think this way. Like bobbing for apples. Down for golf course, because most. The three valves are gonna be basically within the golf course, so that's the intersection of Woodbine and. There's three of them at that, then you got one in the middle of, of uh, North Park. Where you come into the, the driveway there. And then there's gonna be one in Devil's Triangle, which is right off going uh, east.
Yeah, it'd be great if we can still get this finished in March.
It's, it's um.
Well, it took me a few months to get Joe and Matt there.
There, there's. With the way the county is now with their permits and all. It's gonna be not an easy cut in your eye.
Who do we? Who's the holdups of the permits?
Well, no, nobody right now, I mean, we just know that traffic control. Um, concrete on the, the wash paths. Um, we've talked about moving valves forward so we don't have to. Go through all this traffic control. That way we can get in there, cut the valves in, put a new valve in, cover it up, asphalt it, and go. And be done within one valve in one day. Rather than knock out the concrete, which concrete people. Um, won't warranty their work unless there's no traffic on it for seven to ten days. So you have a detour for seven to ten days. And then, again, it's the traffic control.
And, and one of the new things that the county has done is. If you cut the concrete or cut your, you, you can't just patch that area anymore. They want you to overlay a certain distance.
Are the bids gonna include the asphalt and concrete work, or is that separate?
That's probably gonna be separate.
That will be a separate entity altogether.
Okay, well, well, there's more, moving parts to. You can try and monitor that. Time report, you wanna. You wanna uh, go about now or? Well, if, like I said, it's, it's one of us, the, the deadline, different deadlines that we have. Uh, that we felt that were too restrictive or, were not. In reason, uh, that they have looked at, they have extended it in. Different areas, the V D R, uh. Kate was talking about, V D R means that it is the build out. As to drawings, everything that the state's gonna have to look at. Uh, we're still, he's still trying to get uh, architectural drawings for it. And they're, they're working on that, uh, the SOPs, they wanted the SOPs before. We even knew what we were gonna put in.
Before we had the drawings of the job.
Yeah. They're one of the SOPs. That are operating procedures, they wanted it before we even knew what we were gonna put in the building. So they're, they're looking at that, they changed that, that it's within thirty to sixty days. Thirty days after some middle of completion. But the fact, which that would be right. Uh, the other thing was deadline for completion of the construction, they're still, they said we had. Sixty days or something. What was it, no, it was six months.
Six months.
Six months, we have, we have a built in, in operation where they say now it's at least beyond sixty-five days. But also, they uh. Are looking at, they're getting the partner, what? Things coming in, if there is a backorder on stuff that they're just gonna hold up the project. So the, the pretty laugh when the monthly check will be. Yes. Are we getting up the doors? Yes, we are, we have a, usually it's the second Tuesday of every month at one o'clock. Alright. And usually, yeah, I'm with this, uh. Nate, me, uh, USDA, uh, revolving fund, uh. Siobhan, uh. There's Emily, there's, we need about fifteen to twenty of us on that meeting. Alright, let's not move on to the deadline, unless, maybe I'll have any questions about the, the turn to report. Alright, let's move on to the generals. What you said, I was looking at, if the board would accept us getting an Amazon account set up or a credit card.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the acquisition of an Amazon credit card. With the money of five thousand.
Move this afternoon, discussion, questions? Let's vote. Sarah? Claire?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Ray?
Yeah.
Chair will chat. Okay, I need a, I think we should separate them into two different ones, let me ask down here. And then, what was separated into two different motions?
Yeah, the motion for USDA, the USDA application, and then the motion for the S R F application. I, I think that makes sense, also, maybe just ask one last time, um, if there's any public comment. Or, you know, it, it seems like everyone's been able to speak on the issue, but if, if anyone does have questions or public comment to make. Uh, just wanna make sure that that's been heard.
So, is there any public comments on the application for? Uh, for funding for USDA, um, the reserve. There is, there's not.
Perfect, thanks.
I'll make a motion that we approve an application for funding to the USDA.
One second. Move the second, question, discussion? Let's go, Ray?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Sarah? Claire?
Yeah.
Chair votes.
Make a motion at this time, we make an application for the W S R F funding.
You could follow that on revolving fund, state revolving fund.
With the state revolving.
One second.
Second.
Move the second, discussion, questions? Let's vote. Ray?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yeah.
Chair votes. Nothing for CCA, Sue? I'm going to like, I've been talking about the CCA, we're not getting representation from CCA, Sue. And I think we need to, and we probably need to have somebody amongst the board. Be, be represented. For us at periodically at the CCA meeting. So I would like to, a, a board member to consider that, I will actually, I'll put that off until I talk to them. But I think that we, we need a better representation from the CCA.
Yes, um, is there a lack of communication?
We don't have it.
Then so they're not, are they, are they having meetings and?
We don't know.
Okay.
I don't know, normally they're here every Thursday at one o'clock, I don't know, last Thursday was. But there are things that, that, we, I, I guess, I think, like, that we're not aware of, how they're. Uh, approaching complaints or things at this time, and we, we probably should.
Well, but, but they're supposed to be meeting here, right?
They were here last Thursday.
Right, so what would be good would be if we had some kind of communication from them about activities.
Um, yeah. So, I don't think we've gotten any reports on any letters or actions now for the last three four weeks. Um, but if I remember correctly, though, we did approve, once we approve a complaint. To go forward, they handle it all the way to the end, correct? Unless it has to go to.
Of course, we're the court.
Unless it goes to legal, so, um, do we really need to? Should they give us a periodically report, I guess, or, I mean, I don't know, I mean, we basically approved them to handle it from the time we. We basically approved them to handle it, is what we did. The only time they're coming, the only time we told them not to come to us was if it was gonna go to court. They had to get our approval for that, and uh, and then they had to get their, our approval at the beginning.
I am aware of a, of a couple of complaints that we have not heard about.
Well, well, now that is a problem.
So.
Because all complaints are supposed to come to us first, before they act it off.
Right.
If I, if I'm not mistaken, one of our resolutions.
It's set out for life.
To send out letters, it was all supposed to come to us before they did the.
Once I, once I did the first letter, then you guys were supposed to give them approval, you're supposed to go through the next. Second and up to the third, which after the third, then it will go to the.
Well, maybe.
I haven't received any letters from them for a while, because I would be the one sitting on the spreadsheet for me wanting out.
I know they were trying to go through the spreadsheet, uh, as to what was done, what wasn't done. And eliminated, set that. Or whatever, so uh, at that point, I haven't talked to them, I'll, I'll talk to them Thursday and find out.
I'll talk to him later Thursday and find out what's going on.
Okay, that sounds like the answer, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, let's move on. Good morning.
Oh, good morning, uh, we're gonna do, of course, I'll do the dance, like I said, I've got. Uh, from little neighbors, uh, bid on them, uh, on Wayne on Page and. Probably this week I will see Mike, Mike, he wants to put in a bid too, but it gives us a little more. In that a- aspect of that, uh. Brochures, uh, just received them made on two o'clock. Uh, these are the brochures that will go out with the news letter and uh. I think they did a really good job. I think it looks a little professional and more than you can go with that. Uh. Rates on resolution seventeen twenty twenty-three. Uh, when I, when the bomb was going through to Adam and to uh Cassell. We have admission with that resolution. On my tiers two, three, and four, I think I used forty percent instead of forty-five percent, we'll put it into that resolution. So it's changed them, let me pull it for resolution here. It's in there, uh, put it in the. I'll show you the difference was uh, in tier two, instead of being zero, zero. Ninety-nine, one-eight, I, we had zero, zero, nine, five, oh, four, so we were. Four hundreds, thousands of the setup on you. Uh, on tier three, it was point zero, one, one, four, oh, six, where it should be point. Zero, one, one, nine, oh, four. So we were five hundreds of thousands off there. And then on uh the tier five, instead of being. One, zero, one, five, four, eight, six, we were at point zero, one, four, eight, four. So it wasn't signed completely yet as the old one. Uh, I just would like the board to say we're going to uh change those as this resolution. If you look that right.
So what I need is a motion to correct uh resolution one seven dash two, two, two.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to correct. The resolution within a residence. Seventeen dash twenty twenty-three uh. Uh, as corrected by the manager.
It's.
Okay, uh, so resolution uh amending certain rate and fee schedules contained in resolution. Number one dash two thousand adopted eighth February two thousand. Uh, resolution eleven twenty seventeen adopted on twelve December twenty seventeen, resolution fifteen dash twenty eighteen. Adopted eleven December twenty eighteen and resolution twenty nineteen adopted ten December twenty nineteen. Resolution eleven twenty-two adopted thirteen December twenty twenty-two. And resolution fourteen dash twenty twenty-three adopted December twenty twenty-three. God bless you, sir. I'll second it.
Alright, let's go. Ray, handle.
Can you get my breath?
Yeah.
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yeah.
Claire?
Yes.
Chair, go to it. Alright, that is correct. I noticed by the way that that uh Sue did not tip.
No, well. Changed it, huh?
Not, don't tell me that.
The last one, so I'm trying to say. Did you find errors?
Did you mean, Mr. Chairman, that there were no? Errors?
That may have been shot, and we didn't, we didn't have, we're not changing Sue either.
There was, yeah, you had to fight all the injuries on the face.
Yeah.
So that went off, yeah.
Okay, so, oh, business, uh, United. Valma Co. uh meeting, like I said, is February eighth between four and six. And we'll be down here for the second meeting. I've sent out the uh flyers to. Board members, uh, I've got posted, I did put it on the website, so it's out there. I'm also posting it in Facebook. My website that we have. It's scheduled for the uh, like I said, it's a important appeal. Uh, I have a meeting with Carolyn and them and uh. The state, uh, that will be the seventh at one P M or from eleven to one P M. Uh, on the seventh, for yeah.
Any other old business?
Uh, yeah, uh, we discussed briefly last time, the high line. Maybe possibly getting a bit redundant feed into plant where you.
Yes, I've been, uh, I just got a letter back from them. I need to get with Gary and Ray as to the redundancy for which plants we need and where to go. So I can get something back from them. And then I was looking at also getting something from Starlink as to. Forming that route if we need to as a backup or if we can do it as a backup.
Was that an issue with this last plan outage?
No, what it was, was our line didn't go off.
Well, it's electrical, so we we think it was tied to overhead garage door.
Okay.
Can't be for sure.
And then a while back, we discussed um uh outsourcing grant writing.
I did uh get confirmation and stuff last week from CWCB. For that grant uh for the twenty-five thousand dollars. And they recommended it maybe be out of Denver or something to. Contact, getting contact with, that they do grant writing and resumption and stuff that way. Uh, we, they will pay up to twenty-five thousand and we have to pay over whatever to. To see if we can get additional grant writing or whatever for that. This is for anything that's water right now.
So we're like a outsourced grant writer off framework of permission, that type of thing?
Yeah, and I contacted two people and they have not contacted me that. One out came in last year. And was uh looking at being grant writing, uh. I don't know whether she came back to the community or not because I know she left for a couple of months and because. Family issues or something, and she was planning on moving here. Uh, another one that I have talked to is uh the librarian uh here. She does a lot of grant writing, and I was going to uh here with her to see if. She would do it on on her spare time or whatever to, and see what charges she would be.
Who else? Here we go. My turn. Um, do we have the ads in paper for hiring personnel?
Yes, oh, not in the paper. I didn't, I have it online, I have a poster down. Uh, that's the only thing that I have then, put an app in order in the paper.
For for train coordinators, well?
Not yet, I. Haven't done that one, yeah. I was figuring it was more as if hiring people that we need to hire in positions. Uh, right now, I know Gary and Brent are running one more, one guy now at this point, and I'm trying to. Get that in there first and then two guys for uh water and sewer. Uh, nets and uh. Turn the corner in there, so that way.
I knew that. We do need to get, and get a poster of that, so that we can. Move over there, then we'll have, we can, we can say that it was.
Yeah, and I said, now, the guidelines part, you guys, uh, I'm. I know Brett says look into him, and you, you, Ray, uh, these are the.
It looked good, uh, but we need to get it out.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's. You know, we need to, that's. When'd you send it out?
Uh, it was like about two weeks ago.
I wonder if we can get out, like, people to maybe put a little article about how we're trying to hire. I know that sometimes the. The wanting ads and everything are very not nice, people might not even look at them. Maybe if you put a little bit something somewhere else, make it a little bit more noticeable.
Not true.
And please.
I have.
Seems to be enough.
And I got, I've had people from that and say, you know, yeah, how do you apply it to? It's gonna be or go on the web, print the application, just drop it off.
I would put it right in the description or to go apply. That way, if they ask you the question, you know you don't need to respond to them.
We're going to wow.
Um, my, my suggestion is, uh, all these things that we're talking about hiring people, it seems like. We're keeping it in a, under a basket or something like that. We need to get it on every single Greenhorn Valley page. Possibly can get it on all the job descriptions, um, all the benefits, all the, you know, duties and everything. Should be on every single page and successful of the Greenhorn Valley.
Cause I'm also gonna put it in uh. Uh, Colorado Rural Water, I'm there, looking for them. Uh, posting with.
Yeah, but I, I really, really encourage you to get in contact with the word All Valley Facebook pages. All these.
We're on all of them.
A good thing that we might look into doing, uh, which is a good source for a lot of private companies. Is to go to one of these hiring services. And see what they have, cause they have hundreds of people already applications on file. And they may have somebody to send us out, they wouldn't actually work for us at first, which gives us an advantage. Because we can just call the hiring service up and say. No, this one ain't working, send me somebody else, and we're not on the hook for it. But if we do like the person, then we hire them. Cause there's a lot of companies in town that do that, train, there's several companies in town. That hire from those temporary employment agencies. You get them, you get them out here, you try them, if you don't like them, you don't gotta unemployed or fire. All you gotta do is call up the temp agency and say, hey, uh, Joe is not working out for us, please send somebody different. And should get the spot filled.
Anyway, we just need to be aggressive. Uh, A W W A.
A W W A, yeah.
Can we get, uh, we need to have access.
Okay.
And can we get uh, for where we can subscribe to that magazine?
Yeah.
We have, so what do we use? How do we get in A W W A? We're in there already, aren't we?
Yeah.
How do we, how do we, as board members, help?
Use your, use your Call Out City email. I'll send you email on, cause I get tier three on the day, from A W W A.
Okay, and same kinda like.
And say password, the internet, do you?
Yes, we use our email. We would have to get, we have a account with a password?
Yeah.
Okay. Um.
That's I set up my own screen. Email and set up password and. And keep it subtle.
Alright. Any other old business? New business. Anybody?
Well, Mr. Chairman, next meeting, I'm gonna bring a um, an idea for the agenda. Uh, to talk about New Year's resolutions for the metro district. Uh, the, the top of it is gonna be goal setting for. Uh, all these various things that we bring up and we talk about and then we don't get accomplished. Uh, so we do need to start thinking about um avenues where we can train staff in goal setting and achieving. And I hope that would be a discussion I want in the next, uh, meeting, please.
But uh, yeah, so we, I, I, that's good, I've kind of. That's great, that's kinda like a strategic plan.
A plan.
We need to have it.
With specifics.
What else? Go ahead.
That's good. For now.
The new business part of it, one of my issues points on the new business strategic plan. We as a city don't have a strategic plan. Why? So we need to ask, that's a tough one, that's a, it's harder to create strategic plan, but why aren't we doing? And that's up to us as the board, we need to. To be working on that, and that's, that's your resolution, I think, I think. Uh, also, once the board. We don't have a mistress there.
Do you have one for Call Out City?
Not for board.
Not for this one, no.
SDA meetings, is anybody on the board attending any of the online SDA meetings?
I'm not. No, I'm not. Last SDA meeting I attended was uh, when did I get elected? Cause it was that year, so.
So what I have to say about that is it's kinda why not? We took the responsibility of being on the board, why aren't we participating? Uh. We need to take our responsibility of being aware of some of the stuff that's happened. And I challenge every board member to do that. Along with diamond maps. Is any board member done diamond maps? And other board members?
No, I don't even know what diamond map says.
That's our asset management.
That's our, that's our G L, yeah, so one line, two lines, things.
We, we are, our job is to manage the. That Ray is one mentioned it, our jobs, I think, is to manage the network. So we kinda need to know what's going on, so again, I challenge every board member to. To enter diamond map, see what it is. And the city, this asset management program is the, the issue that Scott.
Can we get into it from the house or from the internet?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, trying to think about what everybody's, you know, I mean, your Call Out City, I know, thirty years is on your sorta.
I can't remember because it automatically lost me.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's good to see, but the other thing was we.
Not sure.
It's very wild.
It's, yeah.
Yeah, but I can add you in as well, just go in the viewer and.
It also seems like what hasn't been done.
Just a real quick question here, you were talking about the SDA online, which I was not aware of. The only ones I've ever been aware of are the ones that we gotta pay to go to.
Right.
Well, part of that, I think, was that we need to go to the mailbox, look at them. And then, once you get us involved and once you go to one of these meetings, then you start to get emails about what's coming up.
I get emails all the time, but I've never gotten it. I mean, because I went to the first meeting that I had, that we had to pay for.
Go to email meetings, that she, uh. She lets you, gives you an email about meetings coming up, about online meetings that you can go to.
You can register without.
The register charge, online. And go to these meetings, so. Another thing, I guess, and I gotta get off my soapbox here. I think we need to instruct the manager to give us a, a written and a poster. Of a chart of chain of command within the, we don't have that. Does anybody know the chain of command?
Not specific, no.
I have one, cause I have the due or.
Grants. We need to do it, we need to have, we need, we need to see a printed chart of chain of command. Now, it could be hanging in your office, but we need to have one. Okay. Want to get off my soapbox? Anybody else have?
Soapbox.
Ava? Can I get a?
I make a motion that we close this meeting.
Second. Move the second, meeting's adjourned. Ray, do you want to do a, a shout, email?
Yeah.
Brett, would you rather have it on this one?
On the rocket one.
On the rocket one?
Yes.
You would rather have it on that? No, 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 I'm just saying that sometimes you look at. It's, it's like, they said, if she wants to call in to it, then uh. You get it, yes.
That time I prepared to put up a three number.
Well, I've never sold. Well, I've never, so, when, when I first, when I first got elected.